Good evening. I'd like to call to order our city council meeting for January 19th, 2021. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy. Absent. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Haques.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. I'd also like to invite Alicia Swearingen from the Royal Gorge Vineyard Church. We're really happy and pleased to have an invocation to our meeting today. It's been a long time.
Yeah. Would you bow your heads with me? Father God, we just come before you on the eve of inauguration and we just say thank you for all those that have served our country in every way, every man and woman that has sacrificed and served our country, Lord. We just choose to honor them. And, Lord, we choose to honor those that are yet to come. And, Lord, we pray peace and protection and unity in our country. And, Lord, right now, we invite you into this time in this meeting and we ask for your wisdom and that your kingdom would come. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any citizens request to speak to council, but are there any council member announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda and agenda. Ryan Stevens.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on January 4th and the general government meeting on January 6th. 7B accepts the resignation of the Historic Preservation Commission member, Tim Payne. 7C awards bid 121 janitorial services to The Clean Company in an amount not to exceed $87,000. 7D awards bid 221 asphalt compactor to Ferris Machinery in the amount not to exceed $44,900. 7E awards bid 321 work trucks to Dallenbach Motors of Fort Collins in an amount not to exceed $57,934. 7F authorizes the mayor to sign a license agreement with EV build for electrical vehicle charging stations. 7G authorizes the mayor to sign a contract with the Humane Society of Fremont County. 7H authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for Wagner 1304 Parkmore Road. 7I files a list of bills and the P-card list of bills. And 7J, which is an amendment, is to award bid 1321 Water Street Sewer Main to Avalanche Excavating, not to exceed $195,965.55. And just a housekeeping note on that item. That item still does have to go to the urban renewal authority for approval as well because that's where the funding's coming from.
Any other questions or comments from council? Council, excuse me, councilmember Meisner.
On the, on the humane, item G, the Humane Society contract, didn't we recommend a change or addition to that contract from what was presented?
Yeah, I just watched the meeting.
We did.
What was that?
It was the, to change the after-hours.
Right. There you go. Thanks, Stella.
But I was going to ask about the verbiage that was put in there because it doesn't talk about the after hour. Well, it does, but it's kind of switched. It's flipped around.
What item?
From what you had suggested.
What is that?
Item G. Oh, wait, let me look. So it is number eight.
Right.
And these changes did come over from the Humane Society. So if there's something that you'd like to see that's different, we could take that back.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, Mandy was just...
You think, yeah. Unplug it and then plug it in again.
I did have a question about item D, saying that it would start beginning January 1st.
The, the contract?
Yeah. Have they been paid yet?
They have not been paid yet. It would be retroactive.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jim. While you were reading, I took advantage of the time.
That's okay. So, does the last sentence of that item eight make sense?
So I think what they're trying to say with the last sentence is, there, it sounds like they're willing to take care of the cost for services as long as that animal's going to end up being impounded with the, with the Humane Society. We can't just take an animal to them for care and then not leave it there.
Councilmember Reed, did you have something?
I just had a question on E, if that's okay, if we look at that real quick. I didn't know if Jim had more on this one than we're not. Are we good? So on E, Ryan, I was just looking at the difference between the two bids, Linder coming in second over the other one that's in Fort Collins. Is there not that 5% aspect in there to favor the local business? Because it's only $5,900 difference.
We, we do allow for 5% for local, local bids.
So is that number already having that subtracted? It just seems like for $5,900, I would have liked to see the money stay local if that was possible. Because that's the total difference, but if we allowed for the 5%, it seems like we might be in range.
I, I calculated that. I don't remember what it was. Because I had the same question. And it, and it's beyond the...
Beyond the scope.
It's, it's above the 5% limit. But I, because I had the same question and I calculated that out and I...
Tammy Nordak, do you have any answers for us?
She always does.
Hi, Tammy. Did you hear the question?
Tammy, we can't hear you if you're talking.
Okay, now maybe you can.
Yes.
So, can you please repeat the question? I'm assuming it's on the bid on the vehicles, is that correct?
Yeah, about the 5%, for the discount for being local.
Yes. So one of the reasons that we were not going local on that is because of the timing.
No, timing.
And that, that's what, after speaking with Jim Johnson, that it was, we were looking at, we were able to get the vehicles secured, I think with Dallenbach, and get delivery sooner than we would if we went local.
How much time of, how much time difference and how much cost difference?
I'm, if I remember correctly, we would be able to receive the vehicles in May, April or May versus closer to, I thought he said July or August, maybe later in the year?
How imperative is that?
So, some of the challenges that we've had in the past, it has to do with, with timing. We, we've had several delays. I know with the 2021 models, the, the period to end is coming up here pretty shortly and we're going to have to move to 2022 models, which does cause some delays.
But doesn't the lender, doesn't the lender letter indicate that it's 10 to 12 weeks?
Yeah, it does say 10 to 12 weeks.
And so, the people in Denver was a media?
April or May.
Well, that's not 10 to 12 weeks, is it?
I thought she said April or May versus July or August.
I believe we're getting those faster than April or May.
And, and I do not recall the exact delivery dates that Jim had anticipated.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, councilmember Meisner.
I'll direct it towards Coriann to Ryan. Are we, what's our legal obligation relative to the, to the 5% variance and policy regarding bids?
Well, I would always recommend that you follow the policies you have in place. Having said that, your obligation is to award it to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, and that does not have to be the low bid. So you do have discretion. But, you know, that 5% is there for a reason, so unless there are extenuating circumstances, that'd be my recommendation, but you certainly have the authority to deviate and, and decide to go with the local bid.
It looks like the local bid was just a little bit higher. If I did my math right, per vehicle, well, maybe not, because that was a total. But there is kind of a danger you put yourself in if you start picking and choosing which locals you're going to make exceptions for or not make exceptions for, and that could be kind of dangerous.
Question over here.
Yeah, yours is working. Councilmember Gonzalez.
It's not here. So, Tammy, what you're saying is Dallenbach came in lower and we will have those vehicles sooner than any, anyone else can provide.
That was my understanding from Jim Johnson.
And I know...
As far as the delivery.
Yeah. And we had the same issue with both the police vehicles and the trucks. It was a matter of timing.
Councilmember Reed.
I mean, I guess my thought is, I understand the timing, if I'm hearing everything correctly, but because we're in Canyon City, it seems to me like it would be somewhat common sense that it would take a little bit longer for us to get certain items compared to a company out of Fort Collins. I mean, I just don't really feel like that's, I mean, a sufficient reason necessarily to go with a company, you know, further on the front range if we have access to it. I don't know if there's something in the future where we can maybe give some more time to local competitors because it does, I mean, I know for myself in my industry, sometimes I can't get things as quick as maybe a counterpart in Denver or something would too, just because it has to get all the way down here and with COVID and transportation and all of those types of things. I just would like to see as, you know, really try as best as we can to keep those dollars local when it's possible. I understand it sounds like in this case it's not, but I don't know if there's something we can do to kind of even that next time.
And, and we always do try, try to give that consideration. This was, Dallenbach is off of a state bid and we asked Linder to, to bid off of it to see if we could match that price or get within that 5%.
Councilmember Smith.
It finally worked. Well, that was one of my concerns when we actually were talking about the police vehicle leasing, was how that was going to affect the local bidders. Are you saying that that's gonna?
In, in the past, we've gone local on the police vehicles and because of timing that, we've, we've run into issues where we, we end up pushing back into the future budget years because of, because of some of the ordering issues that we've had. With, especially with some of these fleet vehicles and the police vehicles in particular, the buying power of some of the larger organizations, you know, they, they're placing large orders and they already have these vehicles on order. We're just taking allotment of something that they've already ordered. And that, that's part of the reason why the timing is, is better.
And, and back to Mayor Smith's question, is the demand for the vehicle sooner outweigh the, the cons to getting it later?
I, I think with, with the trucks, I'm not necessarily as worried about the timing with the police vehicles. We do want to try and get those in sooner than, than later. I, I would go back to the city attorney's comment though, or it may have been the mayor that made the comment about picking and choosing. You know, we're trying to be consistent with the policy and if, you know, the cutoff's 5%, then, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're adhering to that.
Councilmember Meisner.
Well, I would, I would ask somebody, which ultimately is with you, to create a bid recap that's at least comprehensible. Something maybe like Adam does, or something that lists the vehicles. I realize we got this sheet, but then I can't match that 28970, 967. I can't match that with anything in the documents.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can put together something that's a little bit more comprehensive.
I mean, I, I see a final page there from Dallenbach or Bach or whoever it is that lists a final price of 28,717, but I mean, I don't see that price in here. So...
Yeah, we, we can put together something for future bids.
Right, and that, and that punches the numbers better.
I got it. It is, it's the 28,717 plus the $250 delivery charge.
Yeah, and we can do a bid tab similar to what engineering does that, that outlines each of those different expenses. Combines it.
I guess if you're going to, the bid tab that they've got in here is fine, but then, I don't know, all that supporting documentation's pretty confusing. Where there's talking about tile hose and this size of truck and this size of truck and, so, I mean, that tab's fine, but the supporting documentation is a challenge.
Any other questions on this particular topic? Any other questions on the consent agenda itself? And if I don't call your name, please, please wave a holler because this little button thing's not working super dependably. Councilmember Meisner.
Unless somebody else's.
Do you need a second? Because I, I wanted to, Adam, if you can come and kind of explain item J, the Water Street Sewer Main to Avalanche, because, I mean, this is kind of a big deal, being able to get the sewer line in. And is this something that will be a URA funded?
This will be URA funded as well, so it still has to go through URA approval before the work can start. So that, that board still has to weigh in on this.
All right. So just for the general public, can you explain what this project is and what its significance is?
Yeah, so the development down, that we're looking forward to doing down on the river, on the north side of the river, where the old Skyline Steel property's at and the ice plant, there, there's no sewer service to those properties currently. And so we need to get sewer service there. There is sewer on the other, on the west side of First Street that we're going to connect to, and then this, it'll be able to serve those properties on that north side of the river. So it's, it's going to be similar to how we do C.DOT grant stuff where it's URA funded, but the city is acting as the project manager for the entire project, which serves both properties, both the city property and the private property to the, the east.
And this is a really big economic development opportunity because we have had other businesses come and look at that property, but because there is no sewer hooked up or water, that is a major expense that they're just not able or willing to take on. And so being able to put that in place now really helps in us being able to recruit potential businesses to the area for development on the river.
Yep. Yep.
Ryan, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, Adam's covered it. You know, there are some challenges there, you know, that private developers may not necessarily want to take on specifically the, how close it is to the river and the challenges it is to dig that trench and install that line with, you know, the proximity to the river. And from an urban renewal standpoint, from a city standpoint, putting in this line will open up economic development opportunities for those properties.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
So is this project a city project or is it, is it funded by an individual?
It is a public-private partnership, so the, the city will be doing, participating in the portion for the Skyline Steel portion, and then we'll be working and partnering with the private business owner, private property owner that owns the Ice House.
Okay.
For that portion of it.
And what's the timeframe on that project to be completed?
The contractor's eager to get started, so as soon as we get the final approval for the, from the urban renewal authority, then they'll be starting construction. The intent is to have it done when the water's low this spring.
Okay. Councilmember Meisner.
Okay. On the, on the cash, I'm not even going to ask about the meters because you've answered that question.
So many times. So many.
And while Tammy's online, are we making, I see more docking stations? Are, are we utilizing the state award on those or are we buying those direct from?
The, the docking stations, yeah, we're using the state bid on those.
Okay. And then, I'm not questioning the expense, but I, I thought I saw board recognition gifts on the previous cash thing. Is that a duplicate?
There...
And I didn't save last month's.
So some of them, some of the purchases were made on the P-card, and so you may see that on a couple of different P-card cycles, depending on when we had made those purchases.
They weren't all made on the same day. They're kind of made over...
Right. I understand that.
Yeah, we, we were trying to spread it out as much as we could to the local businesses and there's different time, timing issues there. Yep.
Just another thing on the board recognition, I just want to recognize that Cindy and her team, you were the ones running all over town to put those together, really appreciate, not only to put them together and support small businesses during the holidays, but to deliver them to the doorsteps of all of our board members, to show them our appreciation. But I want to show, tell you that we appreciate the work that you and your team did to make that happen. And I believe you said that with all the dinners we've provided for the board, this is the one when we just delivered to their doorstep, you got more thank you cards than ever, ever before. So I want to think about that. They seem to like that. And we also want to say thank you to our board members who do work on behalf of their volunteer work for Canyon City. Right, back to you, Meisner.
Oh. I had mentioned this some time back, but have we communicated with some of our local vendors where we're issuing large checks, that we would do those in a, on a check basis versus through credit card payments? We talked about, or at least asked that we do that, that we offer them, you know, a check cert, you know, issuing payment via check versus a credit card.
So you don't have to pay the fee?
You know, 2% or 3% off of $3,200 is a sizable hit.
Tammy, do you want to answer that?
And part of that is also the timing. So we can pay a vendor with the P-card immediately, where if we issue them a check, it could be up to a month after the purchase is made or longer before that's actually, before they actually receive payment. So there's, there's a pay, there's a delay in payment by doing a check with them.
So the, the checks don't go out until after the council meetings? So we, we typically ask the vendors whether or not they would prefer a check, and then we tell them what check run they would be in, or if they would prefer a P-card.
Well, I, I recognize that, but I mean, do you want a check, do you want a credit card now or you want payment in three months? What am I going to do? I'm going to take a payment now.
Not three months. It's typically, typically about a month to six weeks, depending on timing.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Just one thing that I kind of wanted to get on record. I talked to Ryan about it, but it was concerning online sales tax revenue. I had a question come up about how much we had accumulated last year, and so I reached out to Ryan. I just want to get your answer on record so that our constituents can know.
Yeah, so our current financial system doesn't necessarily differentiate between online sales versus in-person sales or, you know, in district sales. With the, the move to being state-collected, we're going to have different reporting. We'll have some different analysis where we'll be able to pull out some of that different information. So hopefully here in the near future, we'll have better idea of what percentage is coming from online sales versus what we, what we currently have to work with today.
I will add to that, though, that the other, are there nearby entities that have been being collected by the state? They had a much higher increase in sales tax revenue in 2020 than we did. I think it's because the state was doing that. Tammy, I have a question for you too, and that is on the cash dispersments for social media archiving for 70 or $4,700. And I'm curious, is that like an annual fee or that? I mean, that's a lot of money to archive social media.
It is. It is an annual fee, but it is, we're trying to be better, have a better handle on social media when it comes to public records and being able to archive that and search social media archives makes public records requests easier to respond to when it has to do with social media. So that includes the city account, the economic development accounts, library, the museum, all of those social media as well as the PD. We, we have quite a few different social media venues that we manage, and all of those are included in the $4,700.
And then solar electric service that we pay, we pay $22,000, about $22,500 for? I thought it was supposed to go the other way around.
No, we pay it.
No. Yeah, we, we get a credit from Black Hills, but we still have to pay to the solar company.
Okay.
For clarification, our total electric bill would be the combination of those two?
Yeah.
The 46, I think, this month plus?
Yeah, that, that would be correct. The only caveat or disclaimer that I would put in there is that Black Hills and the solar company are on different billing cycles. So the dates don't actually line up the way you would expect to do that analysis.
And then on item F for the electric vehicle charging stations? Super excited about that. That's going to be awesome. People have been wanting that for years. And that's at the Chamber of, Old Chamber of Commerce parking lot. Is that right?
That, that's correct.
And what's the timeframe for that?
Rick, do you want to talk about timing on that one?
Yeah, we're looking at most likely June to begin.
June?
That process? Yeah.
When you say begin that process?
To install them. They, they may not start with four right off the bat. I think they may start with two and then add the, add the next two.
Were you a part of getting those arranged? Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Seriously, people have been talking about that for years. And I think it's...
I'd like to do more.
Nicely located and close to our businesses downtown.
They wanted to go at, to Quality Inn, so we encouraged them to come here closer to town, so they...
Yeah, spread the love.
We're, we're also having conversations with some of the private business owners as well, where they can install them in their parking lots if they're interested. where they can install them in their parking lots if they're interested.
Councilmember Hockes.
On the same subject, is the parking lot we're talking about is the one by the old Chamber building and all that?
Yes, sir.
I was just curious. I couldn't remember if that was still, we still own that one?
We still own it, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we good? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, an agenda, please. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve the amended consent agenda as written for January 19th, 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Because there was an addition of a.
Item J.
Yeah, item J was added. Roll call, please. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, Council. We'll move on to item number eight, the administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of this administrator's report has to do with economic development. You know, some updates on where we are as far as the CARES Act funding goes. We have roughly $310,000 remaining from that CARES Act funding. That expires on December 31st of this year. We're going to continue to look for additional programs and ways to help our businesses as COVID continues through the rest of however long it continues. Economic Development has been working on creating systems to make it easier for businesses to start, looking and exploring ideas like retail incubators and industrial incubators and continuing to do some research along those lines. And then the last one that I want, we have the Building Department 2020 report is attached to this report as well as the City Clerk's report. And then from a planning and zoning standpoint, the comprehensive plan is continuing to move along. Wanted to see if February 10th would work for City Council for the next joint City Council Planning Commission meeting. That would be a 6 o'clock meeting.
What date?
It would be Wednesday, February 10th.
That's not a URA meeting date?
It is not.
It would be an additional meeting.
Yeah, this would be a new meeting, but it would be off of.
Be a special meeting.
Yeah, it'd be a special meeting, but not the week of a council meeting.
That's good for me.
Well, yeah, let's just add another meeting.
Yeah.
Good.
So many, so many.
I'll be there regardless.
That's true.
And I'd be happy to take any additional questions regarding the city administrator report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Gonzalez.
You mentioned here the old Jewett's building, that there was someone or an investor looking to sell. I'm just going to say it again, health food store, it's a perfect spot, perfect size. Pitch it, come on, let's get one.
Yeah, we're continuing to look at all the retail matches and we're connecting them with all the data that we have to try and get them. You know, hopefully they can recruit somebody into that space.
Okay. And then did you get my email about the Constantino's Lot?
I did. And I need to respond to you still. The email for the rest of council is about using the Constantino's Lot as maybe a food truck court or something along those lines. And that's certainly something we could do in the short run if there was an interest for that.
Short term.
I know we do have businesses and especially the bars right now are utilizing some of those food trucks in order to stay open and try and draw traffic downtown. So they've been setting up down on Main Street. But we could certainly look at Constantino's as a place for a food truck cart or, yeah.
And speaking of Constantino's, we will be having a meeting. When is it where we're going to talk about the future of Constantino's and Skyline Steel, what our vision is?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
March, I was kind of thinking March, too.
It's on the calendar. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm excited for that.
Economic Development Meeting's March 17th. Oh, it's actually February 17th is when we're doing Constantino's and Skyline.
Right, 17th.
Councilmember Meisner.
So on the City Clerk's report, is it normal to have that number of core requests for the Building Department? Is that typical?
It is. Actually, that's typically where we get most of our building requests is people doing research on property that they're either going to purchase or potentially renovate, things like that.
I really liked both reports for the clerk and for the Building Department. And I really appreciated them and would love to see more from all of our departments. Any other questions from Council? Then we will go ahead and move on to item 9A. And that is to authorize the mayor's signature on letter supporting River Science River Lab Project. And I would like to invite to start with Ryan Stevens and then have Luke Javernik address Council as well. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Javernik reached out to both me and Rick to discuss the project that he's going to be presenting tonight. River Science is a nonprofit and we do have funds available in the community agency funding. And I believe Mr. Javernik is looking for not only the letter of support for their grant submission, but also some matching funds if the city can spare them. And I think this is a project that Luke has been working on probably 18 months now, 24 months. It's a very interesting concept and I think it'd be best to bring him up and explain what he's thinking.
Well, thank you for taking the time and for Ryan and Rick for setting this up. So the picture is what I'll refer to most. But this is the John Griffin Park that sits between Reynolds and Ninth Street. So this is the most used part of the Riverwalk. You'll see on the right side of the picture Reynolds that kind of runs top to bottom. And you can clearly see the Arkansas there. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with this section of the Riverwalk. About 18 months ago, I actually told Ryan about this, this idea. When we were working with the GIS, Fremont GIS, we were looking at the LiDAR that's available here and we noticed these side channels. Their elevation is low enough and it's comparable to the river's elevation that we believe that if they were reconnected, we could actually get water flowing in these side channels that are highlighted. There's a lot of opportunities for recreation, economics, and more that we can get into. But what we're proposing here is to do a feasibility study. There's a Colorado Parks and Wildlife Grant called Wetlands for Wildlife. It's due January 27th. It would support a feasibility study. Their main interest is the habitat, the opportunities here to enhance different habitats for Tier One species. A lot of bird, amphibians, reptiles, fish could all benefit from this reintroduction of these channels. And a habitat stance for what Canyon City and the Arkansas faces, the Arkansas through Canyon really has been channelized, right? There's really very few areas where the river can be a river, mostly due to the levee and then all of the hard bank reinforcement that's along the sides for businesses. Upstream of Canyon, there's the Gold Medal Waters for trout habitat. It's the longest stretched in the state. It goes from Leadville to Parkdale. But we in Canyon, even though we're just, just downstream, we fail to meet those same standards. And it's because we don't have the habitat to support the fish. And we're never going to get that realistically in the main channel of the Arkansas. We're never going to be able to put wood, large wood, different habitat structures in the main channel because recreation is king here. If we just acknowledge that, we're never going to have any kind of root wads or channel-spanning trees or anything like that of the sort in the middle of the channel for tubers or the rafting. So to get this habitat that could push us into Gold Medal really needs to be off-channel. And this is a fantastic opportunity here, no matter where it was. But to think of just what we're out of reach at for habitat for Gold Medal extension, it's a big economic opportunity in my mind as well, aside just from the general habitats. So the feasibility study, because I'm sure that's what you want to know about, it's that first step. It's the survey to really define what these channels are. And then some hydraulic modeling to determine the flows that could occur in these channels, how we would divert water to these channels, water rights assessments. And then from there, it's a lot of stakeholder engagement. What, now that we know what we can do with a few different scenarios, what do stakeholders support? And then going further then would be what would construction costs permitting all of those? And we would bundle all of that into this feasibility study. And ideally, that this would bundle up into a Phase Two proposal to then go for implementation. And that's the high level. I can dive into any more of the opportunities or technical if you have questions specifically about that.
Councilmember Meisner.
My question, just maybe clarify for me and maybe Adam. I thought there was a pretty lengthy, finite process for altering the waterway relative to the Corps of Engineers.
This is an old floodplain. So reconnecting it is a little bit different. But that would be part of the feasibility study is going through the permitting. Once we know what we can do, then it's kind of a matter of how do you do it? So this would all be bundled into the engineering side of this feasibility study, which engineering side of it would be handled by Three Rocks Engineering here in Canyon City.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, Luke. The, in your view, essentially what you would like to do, these are the existing channels. This is LiDAR image, is that correct?
That's an aerial image. And then just so that you can reference it in your mind. But the channels are outlined from the low-lying LiDAR dataset.
Great, thank you. So in your vision, these channels would be reconnected to the river, where upstream water would be flowing through these channels on a regular basis. Do you have some idea whether that would be year-round flow? Even, you know, a 200 CFS in the river or?
Yeah, you have two really good questions in there and I'm going to unpack it. The first one is how we connect the water. That hasn't been determined yet. There's several different options. One, you could just punch holes through the levee, reconnect it without any kind of regulation. That's never going to happen for Rec District. The second option is to install a diversion and headgates where you control the flow in. And in that scenario, yes, you have full control over it. And you'd have to then, and this will be part of the water rights assessment, is what can we pull and when can we pull it? The third option is a little bit more technical. So envision that we trench from these channels, the upstream, to the river. And we line it with an impermeable layer and then we backfill in. And what we're creating then is a spring to where you're pulling water through these buried systems. And then water would enter in. So it would be less controlled, but it wouldn't be, you're not going to have any sediment transport coming in. You're going to have slower fed water. There's several benefits with that, primarily that the water cools as it goes underground and it actually acts like a spring and which is really good for the fish habitat during spawning. But again, we have to unpack all of this in the feasibility study.
And you are working with the recreation group because of the trail aspects of it?
Yes, this is Rec District's property. With little, this is underneath, the white lines are the parcels. There's a few funny-looking parcels that are sanitation districts, the skinny ones that kind of dart up and over to the river. And Rec District and Sanitation District have both signed letters of support. And the Rec District has given $5,000 for a contribution to this grant.
Thank you.
John, did I answer both of your questions?
You did, you did, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
You mentioned opportunities and I just wanted to give you a chance to kind of unpack that. Because anytime we deal with the river or any kind of water rights, there's always some unforeseeable questions that people are going to maybe get a little upset about. So I just want to give you the chance to kind of talk about some of the opportunities.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, there's a couple of things to unpack there. But first, I'll just touch on water rights. That is everybody's knee-jerk reaction to this is what, where are you getting this water? How are you augmenting it? Rec District has some water rights. They have the pumping station upstream. They can draw directly from the river. They don't do it very often. So there are water rights there. We do need to go through a full assessment. We're putting water back in these old historic channels, but at the same time, there's more evaporation loss. We're going to have to go through and really assess that. And then work with the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District to figure out what we have and what we need, which will all be part of the feasibility study. As far as opportunities, we've kind of already covered the habitat, right? That's just, that's a great one. There's a lot of Tier One species that would benefit from this that have been spotted. We know that they are here. The second one would be the Rec District, just recreation in general. If we open up these side channels and their habitat for fish, there's recreation right there for fishing. Fishing that's accessible for elderly, wheelchairs, handicapped. It's, there's a lot of opportunity there, which there are few around the state that really are accessible that way. As far as recreation goes, because it's the Rec District's property, there's economic opportunities here. If you open up those channels for fishing, the Rec District would probably regulate it to some degree because it is their property, which offers them the chance to raise funding. So maybe it's a fishing permit or maybe they only open it up one time a year and have a fishing tournament. We can draw an example from the tailwaters of the Plublo Dam. They've had fantastic fishing below that dam over the last decade. And the Colorado Trout Unlimited chapter that's down there, they get most of their yearly funding by hosting a fishing tournament down there. So it offers a lot because fly fishermen have disposable income, you know? And just with taking out their tournament, you'll have people driving down from. you'll have people driving down from the front range throughout the winter to come down and fly fish below Pueblo Reservoir because it's good and it's warm. And we have a lot of that same weather. And if we have good fishing, there's certainly those opportunities. So that's kind of the bigger economic opportunities. There's an enhancement just to the trail here by having more river next to more trails. So there's that aspect as well. Right now, Rec District is doing a full revision of this area this year. They're looking at getting rid of the, the ropes course. And this ties perfectly into that reimagination for this, this property. I'll kind of keep stretching out on opportunities because there are more. There are other opportunities here. Parks and Wildlife won't fund this, but we've already got most of the, the gears turning here. There's, there are other remnant channels in here we could look at actually doing side channels that are just for fun. Particularly, there might be an opportunity to make one of these channels or a different one to where it's just a slow flow for tubing. So in the high flows, you can take your kids and safely tube down one of the side channels. When and how that's operated would all kind of need to be determined. But it's, it's possible that you go and rent your tube from the Rec District. You walk up the bluff trail and then you ride down, right? There are potential opportunities like that. These are getting a little bit more idealized, but these do exist. And then the last two is if you look at education tourism. And this, when I talk about it, it, it seems far fetched, but it's already happening in Canyon City where you have, I think it's four different universities coming out of state that come here to study our geology. They bring in quite a bit of money to our economy. A lot of universities don't have the opportunities to study rivers, but they still offer civil engineering, civil engineering and hydraulics, hydrology, geomorphology, a lot of specialized careers that really their, their physical processes. And getting the idea of having other out of state colleges come here to study these side channels. And if we control the flow in and flow out, they could be an experiment of their own. And that's, that's one of my interests as river science is the actual research component. You don't get a chance to really do any long-term monitoring or research on rivers just because there's never really any funding for it. But this is a restoration happening and to quantify it for years, like a decade, is something that is needed in my industry, but never happens. Yeah, and those, I kind of packed those two together. Eco-tourism or education tourism and research together. And there's, there's others that I'm not thinking of, but. Oh, there is one more. And this is what the Rec District is really interested in. Is that by opening up these wetlands and, and side channels is that we greatly reduce the risk of fire in this area. That's a huge concern and liability to the Rec District with all of the houses that back up against the bluff. That's, that's one of their main interests in this project. Is putting more water in there, getting those cottonwoods healthier and reducing overall fire risk.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Ryan Stevens.
I, I was going to ask about the research and the education part, but also I don't know if all of council knows you and we are being broadcast. Can you give a little bit of history about yourself and your credentials, please?
Yeah, Brad Rollins not here, so I've got to. I'm Luke Javonick, the Executive Director of River Science. I have a PhD in civil engineering where I researched river restoration. First for my PhD in New Zealand and then a postdoc in Italy for two years through Murray Curie Fellowship. At that time, I started River Science in 2016 that really focuses on making river health and data affordable because it's extremely expensive. And river restoration never is going to hit the scale that it needs to hit if it's going to be expensive. So we're just, part of our mission is to make it affordable. And we've been working since 2016. And, yeah, we've got, a lot of our projects are post-fire, river hydraulic. And, but this year, we're, we're getting, we're actually shifting gears into actually doing restoration projects.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you for being here. So in our packet over the weekend, okay, so I had questions and every one of them was answered.
Okay.
But from looking at this map to not knowing what I was looking at to now, I just want to thank you for your thorough presentation because you answered all the questions that I had lined up in my head. And now I fully understand the scope of this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
So I just wanted to also hit to, because Dr. Javonick, you do a lot of work with the schools here in town. Would you mind sharing a little bit about that? And how this opportunity might make it a little bit more feasible for you to continue to do the work that you're doing with our school district?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We, in, in 2018, we started partnering with Canyon City High School to get students out. They, they have these wonderful classes, but to get them out, to get the students out and collecting data and seeing environmental sciences, particularly careers and how their education isn't just education, but it's knowledge and, and skills. So we took them out on the Hayden Peak Fire and they were collecting water quality data that we used for a Colorado Water Conservation Board grant. Since then, we've partnered deeper with the high school. This fall, 2020, so last fall, 2020, was the first time we had River Science class. It's a full semester. And it has three goals of teaching water literacy, getting kids' skill sets, and then getting them out and actually doing a project. The project that they're working on is the Van Norman Project south of town. But this opportunity ties right in. Having, having this opportunity right in town would be fantastic to get the, the high school kids down and seeing it on a weekly basis and actually working on it. And of course, this is going to cover several years. You know, the, the feasibility study would last a year, but the actual implementation would take several. And the, the students would be, you know, helping throughout whatever phase that we're in, but, but learning the background of River Science concepts.
I, I have a question. It said that you have solicited for letters from FEDC and the county. And I see that you got approval for funding from the Recreation District and I wondered if you were able to get any other matching funds?
Yeah, so Rec District gave us five, county gave us 1,000. Sanitation District gave us a letter of support, but, but no financial support. FEDC will give us a letter of support, but they haven't said any amount of contribution. I feel like I'm forgetting one. Yeah. But right now, we have 6,000. This grant, just to be clear, does not require a cash match. But you do get more points in your application for a cash match. And we were aiming for $20,000 match to go in to this, this grant.
So the question to council then is, number one, do you want to send in a letter of support? Number two, do you want to match it and if so, for how much?
Well, my question, oh, sorry.
Mayor Portem Hamrick.
So having sat on the last three community agency funding panels and putting that, that particular hat on to evaluate this project, this, this, this project can tie directly into our student body at the high school. The opportunities for learning here for the students are huge. It's a real leverage of funds at this point. It's just a, we're just contributing some cash to help, help the, the application along. And if this, I, I would say that if this came in front of me as part of a community agency funding request, I would vote yes on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I know we had some funds left over. Can, can we discuss how much we have?
We have $34,000 left. 34,000, is that right?
There, there was 34,300 that's been used.
Oh, used.
So you have 15,700 left over.
Okay.
So there is money available. Councilmember Reed.
I just want to say that what I think is unique about this project is how many aspects of our community it really does touch. I mean, I don't think there's anybody who can dispute that. I mean, the Arkansas River is our lifeblood in Canyon City. And so anything that we can do to enhance it, whether it's environmentally or for economic development purposes or to benefit the schools, I think it's very rare that we're able to assist with a project that's able to have its hands in so many things that ultimately has to do with the quality of life. And so for myself, I would like to see us not only sign the letter, but also be able to give a financial contribution to see the feasibility study go forward.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion for us to vote on? Councilmember Meisner.
I, I just want to forewarn that if we use community agency funding, that funding comes with a set of parameters that one, it's a reimbursement, it's not an outlay of capital beforehand. And there, there's limitations in terms of how that money's to be used. So we, we need to be careful which bucket, if in fact, we decide to do that, we pick the 5,000 out of. And I'm thinking, based upon what I'm hearing, pulling it out of the community agency funding is not the appropriate bucket because of the parameters for that, for those funds.
What are your thoughts on that, Ryan?
You know, if, if we wanted to come up with additional funds, you know, I've got, you know, there's, you know, contingency funds that we could pull 5,000 from or whatever amount council would like to set from. You know, from a community agency standpoint, you know, I, you know, council's, you know, council's buckets and happy to do whatever council.
So do you think we would have the option of still pulling it out of the community agency, agency funding?
I, I think if we pulled it out of community agency funding, we'd have to, you know, we'd probably have to work the agreement a little bit different. And we've, we've made exceptions before in the past.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would be too big of a problem. Councilmember Hockes.
Two things. One, like I say, we need to make sure where we get the money from to help support this is very important. And the second one is, I don't mind helping and helping support them because they talked about a lot of stuff here that are pluses. Your biggest obstacle to your program is the water. You know, if you can't get the water portion taken care of it, all, all your, you know, aspiration, dreams and everything else are basically kind of down the tubes, so. But I don't see that, I don't think we should be giving more than anybody else has given with regards to the support. Not saying that your project isn't worth it, okay? But I'm looking at it this way. When we start giving out money from the city, wherever it comes from, everybody looks at what we've done. And then sometimes that comes back to bite us because they'll come back and say, well, for this person, you did this and for that person, you did that. So I'm not against a contribution. I'm just looking at it that maybe our contribution that we make, if we make one, should kind of be in line with some of the other contributions that have already been made.
And I, I believe what Dr. Javonick said is they've received 1,000 from the county and 5,000 from the Rec District.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, my question was answered.
Ryan Stevens.
There, there are two letters in your packet. There's one that's just a letter of support and then there's one with a financial contribution. We wrote it in as $5,000, but if, when you're making the motion, if you want to change that, we can make that, those changes and to council's discretion.
So I say, someone make a motion and we can discuss where we're at with that.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor and Council, I make a motion that we authorize mayor's signature on resolution supporting River Science Lab Project.
I second.
With, with funding or without funding?
With funding.
Yeah, in part, in part, sorry. I second it with that part.
And is that the $5,000 funding?
Well, we haven't decided, have we, on a, on an amount?
Well, make the motion and then we can discuss.
For $5,000.
Now I second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to give them a letter of support with a $5,000 matching contribution? Councilmember Meisner.
Well, I'm with Frank. And, and in supporting John's statement that, that I think the community agency funding is intended to help those efforts that are going to build the community or help those in need in our community. But I also supports Frank's position that I don't know where you're going to get the water. I'll leave it at that, but that's, I mean, if everything else lines up perfectly, all your other stars, I don't know where you're going to get the water because I don't think Bob's going to give it to you, so good luck.
You're talking to a postdoctorate.
He, he hasn't learned how to make water yet.
And, and the water rights are a huge component of it. They're an equal part to the, all of the modeling and, and everything else. It's, we can get the water. It, it, it might come down to, to what an augmentation costs. And, and that could be offset potentially by the, the money, the economic returns that maybe is fishing tournaments. So there, there are options and, and all of this needs to be considered in, in the feasibility study. The, the one thing that we have in our favor with water rights is that this used to be active, this used to be wetlands. And then the, the flood, the Flood District cut it off with the levy. But, but, but not to undermine the, the challenges with water rights here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I, I guess what I have to say, kind of what you and Frank, Frank and Jim talked about is we have this community agency funding that needs to be spent. And it's available. And we don't have anybody else coming to us to say that they need funding. We didn't even have enough applicants when, when, when we did the community agency funding. So if we can look at reallocating this, these funds or, you know, trying to get this to happen, you missed everything I said, Jim. And I was talking to you.
Oh, I thought you were talking to everybody else.
Yeah, well, you and everyone. But if we can find a way to reallocate to make this happen, I think it would, would serve a great purpose for our community.
Councilmember Reed.
I just wanted to add, I mean, the stewardship that we've already seen River Science taking care of the Arkansas River as far as, when Jim made the comment about finding the water, it sounds more like a challenge to you that you'll be able to rise to more than anything. But I do feel after the feasibility study that if it's not what's best, it's going to be something that River Science is going to be able to determine isn't best. And I have full faith in, you know, the ability of River Science to be able to make that decision and find ways, if there are ways. I definitely don't know how water moves. So to me, it would be like a big swimming pool and I don't see how you would get the water out of there either. But I do have faith that if this is something that is best for the river, then you'll be able to move forward. And if it's not, then you'll halt the process.
And you brought up something that I wanted to, that I forgot to note was, was how the water gets out. So down at Reynolds Bridge, that's the downstream end, we would have to take those channels and go directly north and pipe the, and discharge it out into the river right upstream of the bridge. And that's where the counties. into the river, right upstream of the bridge. And that's where the county's interest lies, is because however we get the water back out there is going to have to be reinforced. And that's a, a trouble area that they're already struggling with right now, is that south bank, right there on the upstream side of the, the bridge.
So that kind of brings up another topic to me, is that there's an interest in the county for their matching funds, and there's definitely an interest for the Parks and Recreation District, because that is their park, and they have all those benefits from fishing licenses, and tubing, and recreation on their park. But this isn't even technically Canyon City property, this is in the county. And what, I do want to support it, and I do want to offer funds, but I don't know if, especially from community agency fundings in the past, if it's not in the city, we don't give them funds. So I think that's something we need to take into consideration as well. I don't know if our pie is as big as the other entities. Councilmember Meisner?
So, to maybe help clarify that, I think, conceptually, we allocated, somebody did, fifty thousand to the community agency funding pool. And then, we accepted those requests, we reviewed those requests, and then we awarded, I'm going to say awarded, those allocations based upon what council felt was best, in the best interest. And realistically, there's thirty-four thousand left in that bucket.
Thirty-four thousand used.
Well, thirty-four thousand that's been used, so roughly sixteen, fifteen, five left in there. Another, I would feel more comfortable that whatever donation we made, we moved out of the community agency funding, at least to account for where the money's coming from, and then make that contribution as a, as a general fund contribution, or some other type, versus coming out of that pool. And I, and I think it doesn't muddy that pool.
Ooh, River Science.
We, we could do that as well.
Any other discussion on the motion? Sure.
One comparative question. When, when the REC Center did their feasibility, feasibility study, did we donate to that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, actually, we, we ran it, everybody was donating to us, and we, we actually were the ones that contracted for the feasibility study.
I know it's a much larger scale, but, okay.
Still involves water.
Still involves water. And REC.
Yeah.
Okay.
One final question. The, the, you know, the success of this project is going to depend in large part on grants. Has, has our grant writer been, been talking with you, Luke, about, or have we made that available?
I don't, I know Rick and Luke had a meeting about a week or so ago, and I, I don't know if you guys discussed that or not as an option.
Not in particular, no, but he definitely has access to Brandy for grant writing.
Great, as, as long as that's known.
Well, and FEDC has a pretty good track record as well.
And as far as other grants to, to local organizations, not necessarily these grants, but as long as the organization was serving Canyon City residents, we were good with it. And that's the case here, too. This definitely benefits Canyon City students and residents. So, from a, I guess, more from a philosophical perspective, I think this, I would support this as a Canyon City initiative. Economic development-wise as well.
All right, so there has been a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Do we need, do we need a, a amendment to that, or at least a modification to stipulate that that money would come from general fund versus community? And they, and I realize it doesn't mention community there, but you do mention community in your, your opening letter as, as a source. Because you say in there that the funding would come from community agency funding.
If, if you're more comfortable having it come from general fund, I, I would recommend making an amendment, then.
Madam Mayor, I move that we amend the.
A motion?
The motion that's on the table, to stipulate that the funds would come from, whatever the funds are that we approved, that they would come from the general fund and not the community agency funding.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to amend the original motion, to have the money come from the general fund, and not from the community agency funding. Is there any discussion on that motion? We'll now call the vote for the amendment.
You're only voting on the amendment.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
This is just on the amendment. It has nothing to do with the total price of money.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Council. We're back to the original motion that has been amended. Any further discussion? And I'll call the vote. Councilmember Gonzalez?
It is for five thousand. Okay, aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Like I said earlier, I don't think we should be getting that much, and that's why I'm going to vote no against it, okay? Just because of that, I don't think, you know, I just look forward to other people coming to us that says, we did this, which I think is a beautiful project, and then they want more, too. And then we have to keep dealing with stuff like that. So, that's why I'm voting no.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
The motion has passed. Congratulations, Dr. Javonic, and we're really excited to see how this pans out. Please keep us posted.
I will. So it's due January twenty-seventh, and then probably late March or early April is when we'll hear if we were awarded. So, I'll keep you updated.
All right, best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Can I just make a comment? I, I just, I want to be clear that as we're trying to change direction and culture of our city, I think it's important to note that we want people to come to us with questions like this. We want people to bother us with things like this. So, I just want to say that. I don't, I don't, you know, we can say no, but to say that they're bothering us or dealing with stuff like this from now on is not acceptable. But we work for our constituents.
And I never said that, that they were bothering us. I just made a mention with regards to what we need to look at down the roadway as council members. I welcome everybody to come into this, to come for something. But I'm still saying, we are the stewards of these, of the citizens' money. And I've never said anything with what you, your remarks.
You said, we'll have to deal with this.
We, we will. We will have to deal with it again.
We've both made our points, and we appreciate it both. And I'm, I am honored to have these opportunities to come to Canyon City. I also wanted to point out, just a minute ago, we had four department heads here, and I, and I just want to say thank you for being here and taking the time out of your busy days to be attending a meeting.
Busy night.
Yeah, busy night, too. I will now move on to nine B, and that is the first reading and adoption by title only of Resolution Four, Series Twenty Twenty-One, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Supporting the Grant Application for a Local Parks and Outdoor Recreation Grant from the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund, and the Completion of Canyon City Park Trail and Campground Improvements."
So this is a application, a requirement of the application is to have this resolution of letter of support from city council. This is a GOCO grant, and Rick, do you have anything you want to add from the grant standpoint?
I do not, but we have Brandy on the line, so she can give us some background. Oh, she's off now?
I don't think she's on there anymore, but Rex is here, too. Rex, did you come here for this topic?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, staff. I just wanted to thank Brandy and Rick for what they've done. I mean, this grant writer position is something that I've advocated for, for years, and it's paying off big time. This grant funding will basically finish what we started up at the gorge. So, very excited to have it, and I've told Brandy that many times, so.
Yeah, the, the, the grant is really an effort that was put out as a, it's a partnership. Because of COVID, and if you've ever been in the trails, or in the, in the open spaces in Canyon City during COVID, when everybody else was locked down, they were all here. And a lot of those people left behind, damage to trails, damage to open spaces, and a lot of this is really for, some of this is for, for repair, preservation, management. I was participating in the awards ceremony, and a lot of the awards that were given were significantly higher than this. We probably could have asked for more and been, been given this, but it's a very exciting grant, you know? It's, it's a very big step in the right direction, so.
So, Rick, this has been awarded to the city. This is a formality to make sure that we have the letter of support for documentation.
Correct.
Yep.
And there was actually no cash match, this grant. It was all in-kind labor, so that's what the Parks Department will provide.
Hmm, even better. I like the sounds of that.
Mm-hmm. It's a, it's a win-win. We're going to get a, a brand-new restroom out of, out of this. We're going to be able to expand our parking lot. We're going to be able to hire youth corps, crew to come in and do maintenance on the trails that were so heavily used this year that they've, they need that maintenance now. Gates, additional signage, campground host site that we're going to build with this funding. There's, there's just a ton of stuff that we can do with this. And, you know, we've, we've been working on this project on, well, continually for, since two thousand seventeen. And, you know, the Parks Department have done what we can do, and just with the time that we have. But this grant is going to get some, you know, additional people, some youth corps crews in here, so, so we can tackle this project and complete it once and for all. And just to give you a, a kind of an update on the connection trail that's going to connect the Royal Gorge Park with Tunnel Drive Trail, we've got about three-quarters of a mile remaining to do. It's in just unbelievable country. It's, it amazes me to go up there and see Steve Thomas on that machine. I mean, we're, we're looking at slopes like this, and he's digging a trail through there. The trail is going to be absolutely spectacular. I think it's going to be a huge draw for Canyon City. And, you know, this, this funding that we're, we're getting through this grant is, like I said, is going to finish this project off. So, again, I'd like to thank Brandy and, and Rick for what they've done. And this is going to be, it's going to be fantastic.
It's very exciting.
Yes, it is.
Yes. We are, we are all super grateful to Brandy. Make sure she hears all of our praises. I call it her magic wand of creating all of this additional funding for Canyon City, getting our taxpayer money back here locally. So it's awesome. Councilmember Meisner?
My question, I, I guess to Ryan is, is that resolution and those sections mandated? And in particular, item number six? And, and has the attorney reviewed that?
This one, I have not specifically maintained, but this is the stand, or reviewed, but this is the standard GOCO resolution. So I'm, it's something I've viewed before, and I'm comfortable with it. But of course, the city has to be comfortable with it in terms of the obligations moving forward.
So does that mean that, that we have to continue to fund those trails in the, in the future? I mean, we don't have an option if we, if we.
That's correct. You are, you are obligating the city, I mean, always subject to annual appropriation, but you are obligating as a condition of the grant to maintain the improvements.
These are all things we were going to do anyway.
Just these improvements?
Yes.
Which is improvements to the trails?
And the bathroom.
Rex, what specific trails? Because it's not all of the trail system. It's, there are specific trails that this is going towards.
I mean, I don't like section six at all.
Actually, we are under obligation to maintain all the trails in the Royal Gorge Park and any other trail that we have in the city, which includes the Riverwalk Trail and the Hogback Trails. And I think that's really about all the city has, is those two trail systems at the moment, so.
So through previous GOCO?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already been, well, always been in charge of it.
Yes.
The conversation is, can we afford, we can't build more than we can afford to maintain. But this is grant money to help us do that maintenance that we would have had to do no matter what.
Absolutely. And, and the Parks Department obviously, you know, contributes to that maintenance. So, but yes, we are obligated to maintain any new trails that the city builds.
I've been getting tens of, we just keep getting more and more compliments on those trails, especially during the COVID year.
Yeah. They were really heavily used, and like I said, I think this trail is really going to put Canyon City on the map when this is finished. It's, if you haven't had a chance to go up there, I know the weather's a little chilly now, but go up there and take a look at just what we've got accomplished up there now. It's, it's very, very impressive.
So is what he's, Steve accomplished so far, is that open to the public?
Well, no, but the public is using it.
They're still using it?
We, we closed it off initially. The first portion of it was several switchbacks going up that was visible from the Riverwalk Trail, and there could have been some boulders, you know, dislodged and rolling down. So we closed it just for safety purposes there. But officially, it is still closed, but that hasn't stopped people from already enjoying the trail up there.
When will Steve be done with that last three-quarters of a mile, do you think?
Well, actually, Steve is getting ready to go at the end of the month on well-deserved vacation for three weeks. But I've been talking to Ryan, we've got another contractor that we can, and have funding for him, so he can continue the trail. Hopefully, you know, it's just really difficult to say when it'll be finished, simply because of the terrain that he's working in. We're having to rent jackhammers, and he actually purchased it. Hasn't got here yet, but it's an explosive charge kind of machine thing that you drill a hole into the rock, and you put this tube in, and you, you blow the rock up. And it's, it's not a huge explosion, but it just fractures that rock so you can move it with a piece of equipment. So that's going to help speed up the process.
I want to see videos of that.
Yeah, it'll be fun. We, I had one little explosive left that I, I used to chase the geese out of the park. And I gave it to him, and I said, try this out. And he put it in there, and it was a dud, so that was the only one I had left. So I think his machine will probably work better than my fireworks.
Rex, Rex, can we request a demonstration of the explosives, please?
Yeah, I can.
Can we request a demonstration of the explosives?
I think Mandy wants to press the.
Yeah, just let us know.
Okay.
We'll show it. Let's do several off the hill on the Fourth of July.
Right? It would be very important for us to see how this new piece of equipment works.
Yeah, at least I'll get a video.
Got to make sure.
Yeah, we just have to be willing to hike up there to see it. All right, Councilmember Meisner?
So, the sixteen-five that we were initially talking about as matching funds, was that already budgeted?
Well, it's sixteen-five in.
In-kind labor.
In-kind labor.
All right, so, Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-One.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Rex. Thank you, Brandy, and Rick, and Steve, and Farr. We're really excited. All right, now, we're now on to item nine C, second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance One, Series of Twenty Twenty-One, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Vacating a Portion of Brewster Avenue Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado." This is the second reading. We went over this two weeks ago.
Yeah, this is a second reading. I don't have any additional comments from the public, and staff recommends approving on second reading.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on the second reading for adoption, Ordinance One, Series of Twenty Twenty-One.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate that. Item D, second reading and adoption by title only, Ordinance Two, Series of Twenty Twenty-One. This is concerning vacating a portion of the alley on Block Seven.
Again, this is a second reading. We've not received any public comment, and staff recommends approval on second reading.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number Two, Series Twenty Twenty-One, on second reading.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you again, Council. Now, we're on item E, and this is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 3, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Designating the Property and Building Located at 532 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado, AKA Lots 15 and 16, Block 11, Canyon City as a Historic Site." This is the Fremont National Bank slash Wells Fargo Bank.
That is correct. A couple of things to note on this. We are trying to be business-friendly and work with our businesses. There are some state statutes that say that ordinances have to be posted for a certain amount of time between public hearings. For this one, the public hearing before city council will come at the second reading. We have gone through the city attorney, and that, that is, works with them. It was actually Catherine, I believe, her suggestion. So, this ordinance will designate the Fremont County, or the Fremont Bank Building as a historic site, a local designation. This is going through our certified local government and our Historic Preservation Commission. They've already had their public hearing, and they have voted for approval.
And this is so they can obtain tax credits, is that right?
That is, that is correct. So, they can go through the tax credit program.
I do have a curious question, and it talks about the criteria to be designated, and it has a list of five things. Do they have to qualify for all five or just some of them?
I believe they have to qualify for all five.
Okay. Councilmember Meisner?
So, are we just design... Are we designating a date for a hearing? Are we, because I don't see an ordinance in here. Or am I missing something?
I was shuffling through as well, Councilman. I see that it's listed as Ordinance 3, Series of 2020, on the first page, but I don't see the actual ordinance.
Yeah, it is not in the packet. We drafted it. I do not know what happened to it. We sent it.
Considering the fact that there's no physical ordinance here, I think it would be...
I agree.
We can't be voting on something we can't read on.
I agree.
Well, we will, we can table it and bring it back.
Can we bring it back on Wednesday?
That's not a voting meeting. You'd have to create a special meeting.
You'd have to have a special meeting.
But we are, we are trying to be business-friendly, and time is money. How important is this for the owners?
It is important that they get it done quick.
Cindy said she can get a copy right now.
So, Madam Mayor, why don't we table this and move on while we receive it, till we receive a copy of the ordinance?
Sounds good. Let's do that.
Good job, John.
Do we need to vote on tabling it or just moving it to the end of the agenda?
You do not.
Okay. So, we're going to come back to this. Are you printing us copies, Cindy? Okay, thank you so much. Now, that's business-friendly, right there. That was quick.
Just wish we had someone other than staff in the audience.
Well, we're just live. We're moving on to item F, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 4, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 24, Series of 2020, and Increasing the Base Rate Used to Calculate Stormwater Management Fees Chargable by the City's Stormwater Utility Enterprise." Ryan Stevens.
All right. We had an error in the original ordinance with the incorrect base rate, and this, this corrects that error. And this is, we use the same percentage that council authorized previously, which was that 5.62%, I believe. And that, this ordinance will correct that previous mistake. We also have Tammy Nordick on the line to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from city council? Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 4, Series of 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Councilmember Smith, did you have any discussion?
I was just going to make the motion.
And I can call the roll if you'd like.
Ryan, could you please call the vote?
Yep. Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
And Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Council. Item G, this is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 5, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Approving an Addendum to the Master Lease Agreement with U.S. Bancorp Governing, Leasing, and Financing, Inc. for the Police Vehicles."
All right, and we'll have a report from Tammy Nordick on the change to the master lease agreement. Tammy, are you with us still?
I think she, she's up there.
Tammy, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
All right. While we're trying to figure that out, I'll go ahead and start giving the staffer board. During the 2021 budget hearing, we had looked at the fleet that we have, as well as, you know, how far behind we are when it comes to police vehicles. We still have officers that are using 2008 vehicles, and in order to catch up, we were proposing at the time, looking at enterprise lease agreement. We, we did the analysis, and using enterprise, there were some concerns from the city attorney's office regarding that lease agreement. And then, just the financial analysis of it showed that using our master lease agreement with U.S. Bancorp was what, much more affordable and the better option to move forward. So, at this point, we would recommend moving forward with altering that master lease agreement to allow us to purchase the police vehicles.
Councilmember Meisner?
So, now that I understand, or now that I've read things, are, are we essentially going back to where we were at to start with? Before, we were actually buying the vehicles, right?
Yeah, in the past, we were buying them outright.
Okay.
This, this would actually be financing them.
So, we're essentially financing them. At the end of the financing, we're winding up with title?
That's correct.
And the, and the dollar amounts that we're talking about here are for base vehicles only? They don't include accessories?
It is base...
No. Sorry. I finally got...
We got Tammy back. Go ahead, Tammy.
Yeah, the, the total of the lease agreement with, or the financing with U.S. Banc does include all of the upfitting costs, where if we would have stayed with the enterprise lease, we would have had to pay out approximately $5,000 each vehicle a year and include the other $5,000 in the lease. So, we don't have that extra $5,000 a year out of pocket per vehicle by basically financing it. It's included in the lease payment, I should say.
Is that $5,000 the cost to get those accessories on that? Is that what you're saying?
That's the upfitting.
The upfitting is closer to $11,000, but with the enterprise agreement, they were going to make us cash fund that and would not include it in the lease.
Are these replacement vehicles?
These, yeah, these are replacement vehicles for the older part of the fleet. We still have officers driving 2008's vehicles.
So, that, that accessory, our outfitting cost, a portion, isn't some of that equipment coming out of those old vehicles?
Actually, that was one of the issues that we were having from a timing standpoint a year ago, is a lot of this upfitting, it changes when the models change. Cages and things like that, you can't take them out of one vehicle and put them into another. If it's something that we can save or reuse, we do, but a lot of, a lot of the upfitting has to be changed because the models change.
Any other questions from council? I would like to recognize Councilmember Meisner, I believe, when this originally came to council, that it was, if it wasn't yours, it may have been John's or one of yours' recommendation to go back and take a second look at this, and I appreciate that, that suggestion of creating these cost savings to our taxpayers. If that's the case, Brandon Smith, would you like to make a motion on this one?
Sure.
Since I've missed you.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 5, Series of 2020, on first reading.
Second.
A motion and a second has been made. Any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. And also, thank you, Tammy. I failed to point out, you're our fifth department head that's present, even if it's virtual, you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
In light of the length of the meeting and needing an opportunity to review some documents that have been presented to city council, I suggest we take a short recess, and then we'll come back in about five minutes. All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. We are revisiting item E, and that is the introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 3, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Designating the Property and Building Located at 532 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado, AKA Lots 15 and 16, Block 11, Canyon City as a Historic Site."
Again, this is the Fremont Bank Building. Used to be the Wells Fargo Building. They've torn off the facade, and they found that beautiful building underneath. They are looking to restore the facade, the outside, and they have come to the certified local government, the Historic Preservation Commission, asking for local designation. And this ordinance will, is the first reading, will help designate that site. We will have that public hearing on, at the second reading, February 1st, for this particular property.
And this is our first historic designation, is that right?
That is correct.
Our very first one. So, we're making some history in Canyon City. We're excited that this building, I mean, it was so exciting when the cover first came off from Wells Fargo, and we've been waiting a long time to see the next step, and so hopefully, now that we're implementing these tools, that we'll see some more of that. Councilmember Meisner, I have your name on here. Did you have a question?
Sure. Now, lots 11 and 12, or 10 and 11, is that just the bank, or does that include that whole property?
I believe this is just the bank.
Because if they designate that whole property, doesn't that complicate the rest of that structure?
It would, and they've, they've got that other structure that is not part of the historic bank, so I believe 11 and 12 are just the corner.
Just the bank?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'd like to call for a vote, please. Council...
One question here.
Okay, sure.
I'm looking at the ordinance that we just got, and it says, if you go down to 1, 2, 3, the fourth whereas, this is whereas pursuant to Section 1, on February the 1st, 2021, city council held a duly noticed public hearing. Is that the right date? Because February the 1st hasn't even showed up yet.
Yeah. So, the, the public hearing will happen at the second reading, which is February 1st, so when, when the full ordinance gets adopted...
Okay, so it should say will hold. This says we already held.
Well, but it doesn't go into effect until after the second reading, which at that point, you will have held the public hearing.
I just want to make sure we ain't doing something, you know, because I'm looking February the 1st.
Yep.
This is January the 19th.
Yep, this one's a little bit backwards on how we normally do it.
Okay, no problem.
Good job, Frank.
Yeah. Good job being business-friendly and time-sensitive. We appreciate that, too. Thanks for getting that ordinance for us, Cindy. Brandon Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 3, Series of 2021, on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jim, thank you.
I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, city council and staff who worked on this, and the Historic Preservation Committee. We're now going to move on to item number 10, and Councilmember Meisner, would you like to read us into our executive session?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we have an executive session to determine matters relative that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiation, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E regarding the purchase of real property.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, we will now move, or we're going to stay here? We will stay here for the executive session, but we will no longer be live on Facebook, so thank you for everyone who tuned in.